Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, February 6, 2024. The meetings are on Milford TV and our broadcasts. With that, I'll open the meeting and take a motion for the meeting minutes of our last meeting held on January 16.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Motion by Babe to approve the minutes from 1:16:24. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it. By Chris, any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at three. We have no 81 Ps today. We have one amended site plan for 420 Fortune Boulevard, viewpoint sign and awning. I'll read the report by the town planner. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to replace the existing freestanding signs along Fortune Boulevard frontage with one new freestanding sign. The proposed double-faced, non-illuminated freestanding monument sign is five foot six in height and is 50.87 square feet in area per side. The frontage on Lot 10 is approximately 612 feet. The sign will now be placed between the two existing driveways, approximately 97 feet north of the Southly driveway, thus ensuring unobstructed line of sight from both driveways. It will be set back 10.6 feet from the front property line and will not encroach on the existing drainage swales or the Fortune Boulevard right away. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend approval of amended site plan subject to relevant agency comments, which I doubt that we have any.
Yeah, actually. Excuse me.
Yeah, I just got a sewer letter.
So I have Liz's comments. The following comments were prepared for my review of the following documents: amended site plan, plot plan from new sign, viewpoint sign and awning drawings. The applicant should confirm removal of the existing signs includes any portion extending above ground. Any grading or earthwork completed to install the new signs shall not alter the grades within the budding drainage swale. And fire department amended site plan was reviewed, has no recommendations. Wow, somebody's actually reviewing sign drawings. If the water company sent their standard letter, I'm going to kill them. No conflicts. Thank God we don't have anything about water pipe. Water Health has no comments.
And we got the sewer letter. It's not in the packet, I just.
Okay. Although I can't imagine it would have been too difficult with sewer anyways. So with that, yeah, I should say, the sign company, is that correct?
Yeah. For the record, my name is Bart Steele. I'm with Viewpoint Sign and Awning. And the town planner's letter points out what we're asking for very clearly. And in response to the engineer's questions, I can assure him that removal of the existing sign will be below existing grade and the new sign will not pack the swale or anything of that drainage area.
That's the town engineer.
He's happy to hear that. No, it's fine. I'm totally not. It's totally fine.
So you have the drawings?
Yep.
And you have the new site plan? You just have to be up. So what was that going to do?
Questions from the board.
Pretty much self-explanatory.
If we look at the GIS right there, that's 97 feet north of the South driveway.
Yeah.
So that's, then this is an old area.
Yeah. I have no questions, so.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the amended site plan.
Motion by Babe to approve the amended site plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Chris, any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at three.
You have those seriously out?
I hope you posted them just for me.
Now, we have other, a couple other things.
You were the most important thing.
Thank you. Who's in this building now?
So prover de lapse. Oh, okay. No marks or short code. And Avichia has just red-tripped it, too.
Yeah, I thought that was one from the picture, but I couldn't see it.
Yeah. Technically, it's 420, 430, 440.
I shouldn't have my name here.
ZBA variance special permit referral, 45 Madden Ave, Kevin McCarthy. I'll read Larry's letter. In the applicant requested variance and special permits will offer the construction of an addition and an attached garage to the single-family dwelling on the subject property. The proposed two-story addition includes a 24 by 24, two-car attached garage and is to be 9.4 feet from the side property line, South property line, at its closest point. 15 feet is required in the IB district, hence the variance request. The existing lot is non-conforming as to lot area and lot width, and the existing dwelling is non-conforming as to front and side yard north setback, hence the special permit application. The zoning in this area was changed to RB after the neighborhood was partially developed. Subject dwelling was built in 1952. Therefore, I recommend a favorable forwarding to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
At least they didn't propose the addition going north. That was something.
Yeah, well, you didn't want to get too close to the neighbors. Any questions from the board? No questions. Do I hear a motion? I mean, most of these are actually close. If you look at the existing house on the other side, it's probably the same distance as what this will be at the end of the day. So, I mean, it's not like it's going to, all of a sudden, you have one that's way closer to the property lines than the others. And front yard, it's actually, the addition is further back than the house is now, so.
I always considered when they changed the RB zone and everything, I always considered that was the hardship that the town imposed on the people anyway, so.
Well, in this case, to a certain extent, it's been a family home since that was built, too. So it's not like, you know, somebody just bought it and decided, oh, can I turn this into a duplex? Or can I, you know, can I get two house lots out of something? It is a family home.
Absolutely, yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for the special permit.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris to send a favorable, seconded by Babe. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at three. ZBA variance special permit referral for 3 Clearview Drive, Christopher De Pietro. The applicant requests a variance and special permit to allow for the construction of an attached garage to the single-family dwelling on the subject property. The proposed two-story addition includes a 24 and 1/2 by 34, two-car attached garage and is to be 11.8 from the side South property line at its closest point, 15 feet required in the RB zone, hence the variance request. The existing lot is non-conforming as to lot area and lot width, and the existing dwelling is non-conforming as to side yard north setback, hence the special permit application. The zoning in the area was changed to IB after the neighborhood was partially developed. The subject dwelling was built in 68. Therefore, I recommend a favorable to the ZBA.
Kind of a twin to the prior one. Even going on the same side of the house.
It's a big, it's a big garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's mostly deep. It's great that it's.
It's the depth. Yeah, it's 24 by 34.
That was my thought. They really did try to keep it normal.
Yeah, I guess the 11 is at the front section. You can't change that. The depth doesn't kill you any further. Any questions? Or do I hear a motion?
Quick question. Yeah, so it was 24 and 1/2 by 34. We think they're 34 deep. I just know the second to last page showing 26 deep.
Which you're, oh, I'm not looking at the building plans for the dimensions in my report. I was looking at the site plan, the certified site plan.
So just, yes.
So.
Although, although, oh, you know what? Now I see.
14.
Oh, you know what? So A.
It's 20 plus the eight.
Eight, yep. Now I see it, yes.
So it's really not garage, it's not all garage.
Correct.
Yeah, the floor plan shows it wrapping around the mudroom addition.
Yes.
That's why it says.
Yeah, my apologies. Yes. Yep.
So if you look at. Yeah, I know. It's like, what's beyond the mudroom?
To the right.
Yeah.
I think that's just other, it's just a more garage area.
Yeah.
Just like a little bump out in the garage.
Yeah, a little outgoth, right?
I think they're building the mudroom inside the garage, basically.
Mm-hmm. I'm not going to get into architecture, so what are you going to, what are you, you're not going to be able to get to it, but.
That's the other apartment, right?
Yeah, probably.
Sorry. Sore topic.
Actually, that closet is really not smart.
Well, it's, I mean, it's.
It's the closet that bumps into the garage.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know.
You're questioning that spot off to the right that's just like.
Yeah, well, it's even shown, I mean, floor framing, floor framing section has it. It's almost like there's, I mean, they're putting in, it looks like they're putting in a wall there. It's like, why would you build that little thing there? Just pour it out and get rid of that. You can't even get to it, but I don't want to get into it. Seems weird, but.
Storage.
Yes. With a car parked in front of it, you still have to get to it.
And then on the other one, on the left stall, they're bumping out a closet into where the car was parked. So you're going to leave some of the depth.
Mm-hmm.
Combat car, combat car.
Yeah, there's a lot of people driving those down there.
I mean, I would have just extended the mudroom, been done with it, but.
Make a motion, we send a favorable recommendation to the.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Motion by Babe, send a favorable to the ZBA. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at three. Possible zoning bylaw amendments. You got the package in here, Larry. I know he sent these out.
I only added those because I wanted to at least let you, you guys know. There had been a couple of things that I was thinking of in terms of our prior discussions on the brew pubs. You know, there's no requirement to retain that whole production capacity in the definition, especially as we'd previously discussed, you know, that varies wildly between or among the different brews. So you could just skip that. That would be one suggestion I'd have, is potentially just eliminate that production And that would solve some problems that we'd previously discussed.
Well, I looked at it, maybe because I had nothing, I had nothing better to do, but that actually turns out to be 1,500 pours a day of 12-ounce beers. So, I mean, I think the number is probably more than generous for somebody to do. So I don't think it affects anything. I don't know that we'd want something bigger than that at the end of the day, is sort of what I was thinking.
And I agree. And I sat there and deciphered it 100 different ways, and Larry's 30% of the floor area kind of nixes it all anyway. And that, the 30% actually controls it better than anything else, so.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that the percentage is agreeable for the board to go forward with, then getting rid of the capacity, especially where it varies, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to have the same capacity that's applicable to wine as you would to beer or, you know, gin or whatever else you're brewing there, so.
1,500 gallons is too much for a distillery, but there's no way a distillery could do it anywhere near that with 30% of the area.
Exactly. So that was why my suggestion was to just get rid of that capacity sentence in the definition, and at least that would clean it up a little bit as you move forward.
And also the 30%, also makes it a restaurant-type use.
Yes.
It makes it more prevalent than distillery or brewery or anything else, so.
Yeah, because that's the thing that I would be worried about. I was looking, you know, just thinking on top of my head, would somebody come in with a big restaurant for the purposes of, okay, getting 30% of that and putting in a, you know, a much bigger brewing thing than we're probably looking for? But it would get pretty, pretty big in order to do that.
Yeah.
So it probably would limit itself anyways.
The same, yeah. I was, the production is going to be more limited on the fact that it's going to be, has to be direct consumption on-premise.
Right.
So you only have 30% of your space, whatever you produce has to be, has to be consumed on-site. So, yeah, there's, in a sense, no need for, in my eyes, to limit what that production amount is. Sales are going to limit the amount anyways.
Yeah, I guess the only thing.
Even outside sales with only 30%, they're not going to be able to.
Yeah, that would be the one thing that I would think would be, you know, would be a discussion point, is to allow them to sell out of that location, so that you go in, you have the beer, and you buy a six-pack or something. To me, would seem to be appropriate that they couldn't sell it, you know, because again, we don't want, this isn't necessarily to have a production-type thing. We don't want them selling to liquor stores or other restaurants. We want it for that. But I think that a lot of them do make part of their business being, having people come in and being able to purchase whatever they're making at the location. I think that that would be, because if your only, if your only possibility is to make it and drink it, then you're really going to be limited as to how much you're going to be able to make.
Right.
And I think to make it, you know, profitable for them and worthwhile, that they at least need to be able to sell it out of where they are. So I guess, that's the one thing that I guess I wouldn't be in favor of, is to somehow say, you know, we'd like them to sell it at the, they can sell it at the location, but they can't sell it, you know, to anybody else. That would be my only.
Yeah, if they were going to do it and make a good profit out of it, they'd have to go to a different area.
Right.
For more production area, because there's 30% production area, there's no way that you could.
Yeah. So I guess that would be my only comment.
So, but that would be something that we would try and include in an expanded definition, even though we're taking the one sentence out.
Yeah, we'd have to put something in to allow, yeah, to allow for retail sale within the establishment only, or something like that.
All right. The other thing before we go on to the next one is, just above that, the change in the use schedule chart was to get the current CC zoning district permission of manufacturing, processing, and research of industrial uses. There are currently special permits in the commercial C-zone as well. It's just that right now, they're by the ZBA. So if the brew pub, easy for me to say, if the brew pub amendment goes forward, I think you would want to change that one so that that's a planning board special permit as well.
Yes.
Because otherwise, that's a direct conflict with what we're saying in the new one, because all of a sudden, as an accessory use, a brew pub isn't industrial use anymore.
Yep.
But it still is. But that's why we wanted to do it as a, yeah. So that one's, that one's good. All right. And then the electronic, the EV charging stations, if anything would be something we'd be interested in trying to get on the annual town meeting, I think this one's it. And the only thing I came up with in addition to what we already had was to establish a threshold size of parking lots to be considered under Sub 1. So, and maybe even Sub 2. So if you've got existing parking lots that have fewer than 10 cars, why would we want to encourage losing one of those to a charging station? So I would say for parking lots of 10 parking spaces or greater, Sub 1 and Sub 2 would apply. Sub 3 is going to apply just the way it's written, because those only occur in plazas where you had gotten a multi-use parking reduction special permit from you guys anyway. So I would, I would just, for 1 and 2, point 1 and point 2, do it for parking lots 10 spaces or greater. Does that make any sense?
I think it has to, I'm almost thinking it might be higher than 10, to be honest.
Well, or some, yeah, or some number of.
I mean, and I've been trying to figure this out, as to where this is going to be used or not. What is the, and obviously, this is difficult to do, but, but, you know, if you go into, if you go into something where you're going to be there a half hour, it doesn't make sense. I mean, people aren't going to go and charge. So for, so for quick turnaround spots, they're doing it as a business. To me, that should be regulated as a business. If you have enough room to put it in, but it's totally separate, right? If you, if there's a usage where people can then charge their car as well, like going to a restaurant, you could be there for an hour and a half easily. So that would get you long enough time to get a reasonable charge, okay? So places like that, we should, we should indicate how we want to do that. You know, I was thinking, like, even like, at Kohl's, which is, which is off the highway, which, you know, is going to be the issue as we go forward, is having stuff, and I'm not saying Kohl's wants to do it or not, but is there a usage within Kohl's that would get people to go down there, sit there for long enough time to actually make it worth their while to charge or not? And I'm not even sure that there is.
Well, like Target, how many did they put in? Five?
Yeah.
Five or six?
Six or eight.
I assume they're doing it, not because of people going to Target, but at this point in time, they think there's a market for people getting off 495 that need to find a charging station. And of course, it's going to get put on Google Maps, and people are going to stop in to some level. And I think that's going to get, that usage, you know, get in now, because later on, that's not going to be that convenient for people. They're going to, they're going to want to get off in, because you'd only use that, to me, you'd only use that in emergency. What are you going to do? You're going to sit there and, sit there and watch your car charge for the next two hours?
Yeah, but for Target, you know, they, that's a service, so to speak, to the customers.
Yeah.
So to the extent that you weren't necessarily going to go there, but you need to charge your car.
Yeah.
Say, oh, well, yeah, I was thinking of going in and buying whatever, so I'll charge my car and then go in. It's not like they necessarily planned their trip to somewhere.
When I was going by there, actually today, not by Target, because I couldn't see theirs, but who I don't remember ever coming before us, the hotels, there was like two or three cars connected at the hotels, which to me is like definitely a usage where you would want to have them.
It's no different than going home.
So, but having, having a number, a minimum number, seems to me, from our standpoint, to be the simplest way to get at it, but 10 may not be big enough.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 10, 15, something like that is good, because in an area like that with a small number of parking spaces, they're usually in and out, they're in and out things.
Right.
Like, you know, I seen them do it in South Bellingham at Stop &amp; Shop. They put two charging stations in. I mean, it was a retro, it was a retrofit they put in. But when I used to go there, they were used sometimes, sometimes they weren't, but they were used more than I expected.
But the other thing is that right now, the way it's drafted, it says 10%.
It says up to 10%, right?
Yeah.
Does not exceed 10%. The number of charging stations doesn't, wouldn't exceed 10%. So if the percentage stays the same, and you need at least 10 cars to even do it, that's one space gone right there.
I would, I would go to 20 anyways.
All right.
The only reason why I'm thinking 20 is, I don't think, I don't think there's an economic, I don't think it works out economically for a single spot. Like, if you're doing 10, if you had 10 spots and you're only going to put in one, to put in all the infrastructure for one doesn't, doesn't work out. So going to 20, I don't think changes anything.
Yeah, and that's getting more to what would be economically viable for somebody to do it, so, okay. But I guess of the three that I've got here for quick discussion, this one would seem to be closest to doing in May.
Now, how did we, I was just trying, I was reading through, and then I forgot. Are we counting these as part of the required spaces needed?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we would, I would think that, that we would want to, and I guess we could always do that as part of site plan approval, is that they would need, they should put up a sign at those locations to say there are, that those spaces are available to everybody. If there's no one charging, there should be a sign that says, people can park here if there's, if there's no other, if there's no other spaces available, is what I'm saying.
I would feel, oh, yeah, which I think most people would, even if.
Yeah, some people, some people wouldn't think twice and they'd park there no matter what if it was closer. But that's a different story.
That's the, I think, where the spaces are located, like, so Target and.
Yeah, they're far.
They're far away.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're not, yes, even if they were being counted, which those aren't, but even if they were, it's, they're not, but if you had them up, if you had them up close to the building.
I think we may be starting to get into that at some point in time, because it becomes more mainstream that they're going to take, they're going to take parking spots that are, and so that's why I just want to make sure. But I don't know that that needs to be in here. I guess we could do that as part of the site plan approval, to ask them to put a sign in. It doesn't have to indicate that we would, you know.
And I think that you could do that a little bit based on where the parking spaces are located.
Yep.
Right, and there's signage that goes with them anyway, from the state's regs, so it'd just be included in part of that.
Stop &amp; Shop in Milford, we could put them in the back.
That's the only place they would go.
I told you, that's where they were going there. So if it's all right, I can get this put together and then do the number with the letter to the select board, have them remand it for hearing.
Yep.
Of course, that means now I have to fill out that other form.
My favorite form.
Do we know, I mean, because really, the brew pub bond doesn't bother me as to where we are either. Do we, do we know how, what it looks like for articles on the next town meeting? Does Ricky have an idea as to how big a?
No, I don't have a specific number, but he was, he didn't, he didn't want to see a whole lot of article coming in. And I said, well, you'll get what you get, you know? You know, if there's stuff that's important, you're going to see it from.
Well, yeah, I mean, the other thing, I'm trying to think what, when, are you guys going fall town meeting for funding, you think?
To be determined on Thursday night. I'll let you know.
The only reason why I'm asking is that, to me, if you were going fall, we'd be better off putting these in now than going later, just because it's just, you know, obviously, you're going to need a significant amount of time to go through whenever you guys go for that issue, so.
Yeah, this should be relatively simple. The other one, the brew pub, may not be so simple, depending on what else we can come up with. But this, the EV charging station, should be pretty simple and straightforward in terms of time at town meeting.
You could go forward with the brew pub for now and then.
Yeah, we could do that and just, yeah.
See what you guys get for public.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
We can always, yeah, we can always.
Or pass over.
Yeah.
If it's actually printed and published, you can always pass over it.
Yeah.
But I hate to do that if it looks like it'll work, but nonetheless, that's still an option. So then, the last one, this is new, we hadn't talked about this really, at least directly, and that would be to amend the use chart for the commercial C-zone to allow contractors' yards by a special permit. They're already permitted in the, in the three industrial zones, and I showed it on the chart as a zoning board special permit, because all the other auto-related uses are already ZBA special permits, so this would be analogous. In fact, depending upon what all's happening at different contractors' yards, they may need to go for the other auto-related special permit as well. But since I can think of four contractors' yards that have been longstanding zoning violations in the commercial C-zone, and the building department doesn't appear to be interested in enforcing the bylaw, if we change the bylaw to make them special permits, at least they have an operation to go through to potentially stay where they've been illegally for a few years and actually get approval.
Larry, you talked to me about this. I said this would be good to have a discussion with the board as to how they feel. Obviously, we don't, we don't want zoning to be set up by the fact that the zoning enforcement is not taking place, so let's change the zoning, but.
No, I think in that zone, I think the special.
Well, and that's why I said it should go, yeah.
Makes sense. Again, the other ones, I, the others. Again, the, the other ones, I, the others, industrial is a thing, it doesn't, doesn't matter, but you could set some parameters of what, what it's gonna be in that zone.
Well, yeah, I mean, the question comes, I understand why Larry said it should be zoning, or why, why he kept it as zoning, as zoning board approval for the special permit. Obviously, I think we, we probably have some feelings as to whether those parameters would be followed through with zoning or not, and should it be, should it be here in front of this board as opposed to them?
It would take too much changing, I think, to change it to-
Yeah, there are too many other changes in the bylaw, but you still get back to an enforcement issue, because the ZBA has improved, has approved numerous special permits with conditions that are pretty clear and straightforward, and they're not being enforced. So ultimately, it comes back to the same point.
Yeah.
But at least in terms of the structure of the bylaw and its operation, that's, you know, that having it stay with the ZBA would seem to me to make more sense. So I can, I can run this one through the process as well, so we'll just do all three of these and-
I would run, I'd run three of them through the process, and you can always, what's the schedule, Larry, in terms of when do they want possible articles back? Do you know?
I forget what the deadline is to submit them. I think it's sometime this month, but I'll, I'll get these done right away and get them in, because we, more than their little schedule for when they want articles, we need to get their remand letter, which is more important, so.
We could, the public hearing, we could hold any time.
Well, only if they remand it to us, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, but I'll get these done quickly and, and whatever their deadline is, it, it may be next week.
Yeah, I think it-
Is it that soon?
I think it might be.
Yeah, it's kinda quick.
Well, if it's, if it is, then yeah, I would go forward all three, and then we can-
All right.
See where it takes us.
You do that.
And the idea would be, yeah, go forward all three, and we could still make revisions to these four, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and even, you know, if we can get stuff before the hearing, that's even better.
Right.
The legal notice for the hearing doesn't repeat the entire article, it encapsulate what's it about, so, yeah, so there's wiggle room there as well. So.
Yeah, quick question too, just on the, I'm assuming too, I haven't looked, but the contractor yard, there's, that is defined within the bylaws also, so I'll look that up tomorrow.
Very good.
Yep, there's been, you know, an argument between John and myself about the definition, but I think the definition's just fine, and it'll be even better now that it's gonna be a special permit in the commercial C-zone, because those are the areas that brought us up to that discussion in the first place.
Well, and, and this is somewhat off-subject, and we can deal with it as is, but that, it's an interesting comment that you said, there's a discussion between you and John. I mean, I think we know what, what we wanted it to be. If, if there's something that John, for whatever reason, feels he can't, he's having a tough time determining or not, I wouldn't have an issue with going back and changing it as required, as required so that he can be comfortable that he's doing it. I understand, I understand that you're comfortable, but if we need to change something to, you know, I, then tell us what that is, and I'd, I'd be willing to go forward with, with having a discussion as to, you know, if he thinks it doesn't allow this, or, or does allow this, we can tell him, yeah, it doesn't, or yeah, it doesn't, we're gonna make that change to, to do that.
Part of the reason the discussion occurred, and this has been ongoing for four or five years, is because of possible uses in this zone, at different sites, or, you know, similar things. So in the context of what this does, the definition's just fine, because this overcomes some of those problems, because it doesn't matter whether he and I agree on what it says or not, it says what it says. And the ZBA will figure out if that particular use, and they can do it on a case-by-case basis, it's not something that affects everybody necessarily the same, because it's a special permit-
Yep.
Based on that use on that site by that applicant.
Yep.
So that solves a whole bunch of problems.
Larry?
All right, so, we, oh.
We got, we've, the Conservation Commission named their ad hoc comprehensive plan member, and that was Jeffrey Frederick. And to an update, Larry, I'll let you go ahead and give the, the up, tell you.
Yeah, before we get off of the, the new appointment, Town Council had advised me that it really isn't a comprehensive plan subcommittee of the planning board, that technically and legally, it's an ad hoc committee. So hence, the terminology has all changed, so it's, the long title is the 2024 Ad hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee, the short title will probably just be the Ad hoc Plan Committee. It'd be easier to say, anyway. So I'll have to get used to being ad hoc, at least in that context, for a few of you. Yeah, part of the, part of the update, I included a packet for some information from NA PC itself, and then the three primary staff people, of course, Mark Rassikot, who's kind of the godfather of planning at, at NA PC, at least since the mid-'90s, you know, very knowledgeable, he's in charge of the department overall. The people that are directly assigned to us, and these are the two guys primarily that Joe and I've been working with, Josh Fiala, who will be the, the lead, and then Courtney Lewis, also a regional landies planner at NA PC. So those are the two lead consultants who will probably show up for a kickoff meeting, and what, what Joe and I worked out finally with them, since we originally thought they would be coming the 20th of this month, that they have conflicts and can't be here, so the kickoff meeting would be March 5th, which is all right for March, because the March 19th meeting is that continued public hearing. Now, whether that really happens, or if it does, whether it's very lengthy or not, either way, I'd prefer not to have the consultants coming in on a night when there's a public hearing, because when they do come in, as, as we discussed, we wanna put them on the agenda first. So the March 5th is, is the kickoff meeting seemed to work out. Then the other thing that Joe and I'd been working on is, they still wanna do a tour, and they have 10 staff members from NA PC that are gonna drive over and do a tour of Milford. So I was able to line up a bus from Blair House to meet at the senior center, Dick, Joe, and Mazakelli up as, as co-tour guides. So you'll both have bullhorns at the front of the, or one could be at the front, and one could be at the back.
I'll take my umbrella.
So 10 of those, 10 of the NA PC staff, and, and Joe, and, and Paul. So they're gonna meet next Friday at, at the senior center, and we've got the bus from 10 to 2, whether the tour takes that long or not, that's kind of up to, up to you guys. But Liz and I are gonna start with the old bus route that was done back in 2003, and update it, because a lot of stuff has developed, so there may be a couple of more loops than, than the big around-town loop that we did the first time. So hopefully, that all works out. Luckily, I'm not gonna have to go. There's no room on the bus, right? But, so that should be happening, whatever, what'd I say that was, the 16th, from 10 to 2. So thanks, Joe, for being a tour guide. But I figure of, you know, the people that could be readily available to just go do that, it's gonna be hard to beat our chairman and their chairman, so, unless it's with Babe. But we're running out of space, and the bus, I don't think is easily accessible either, so, just, I don't know. And the other, the other issues, obviously, with the ad hoc committee is when multiple, when you have a multiple-member body like that, we try to make sure we don't have many of them show up for something like this, when the main thrust of the bus tour is for those guys, not our guys, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's gonna be much discussion as to going forward. I think the, you know, discussion is, you know, how we got to where we are, what's out there now.
Right. There's a lot of stuff that's happened since I've been here.
Yep.
So, yeah.
So anyways, that's where we are with, with the comprehensive plan now, so we are moving forward, obviously, once they, once we go through the tour, and then the first time they come here for introductions, they'll, you know, start getting down to work in earnest, I would, I would assume, but we are moving forward.
Hey, Courtney Lewis, she's got some, some education, I don't know, any type of any practical.
Well, at least they're gonna be able to get the tour in before the kickoff meeting, and then there's time if they need to come back themselves, because one of the fallbacks would have been, had we not been able to get the bus, they would just do like a caravan in their own cars, which to me seemed like a bad idea.
Yeah.
But there's nothing that prevents them from coming back, a few of them coming back and doing that themselves anyway. But at least this way now, in theory, they'll know where to go, unless you guys get lost.
Yeah.
Of course, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on Liz's map, but that's why.
Well, Blair House worked out, Larry, Larry found that, he had called the senior center, and, and obviously, at that point in time, the senior center has one van, and that's a prime time for them to usually have people, so they couldn't really reserve it for us. But they did mention that Blair House does rent out their vans, and we're actually quite reasonable in terms of the cost, so with, with what Larry has in his, in the planning budget, we were able to cover it through that. And it's, I don't know if anybody had anything else? Oh, did you ever, were you able to ever to get in touch with the police chief about what the, what their plans are going forward?
Yeah, it's possible that they've already worked everything out, and that it might be all as early as next week. That was what I was told today, but I, I've got, I've been getting a lot of mixed messages, so I'm, I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to-
Yeah, because according to, to town treasurer, he, they can't touch the money, so I'm not sure where the money's coming from, that he's thinking-
Well, that's, I would just, this, this all happened at like 4:15 today, and, and so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go see Zach first, well, maybe first-ish.
Yep.
And just, and just double-check, but I am working, I am working with both Chris George, and, 'cause he's working with them, and with the police for the others, and so that's why there's a lot of round and round. I am, I am following up on it.
Okay. I don't think I had anything else. Anyone else have anything else? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn, then.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that's unanimous at 3. Thank you and good night.